Good evening, everyone. I'm Leigh Thielen, and I'm from the League of Women Voters of Laramie County. And on behalf of the City of Fort Collins and the League of Women Voters of Laramie County, I'd like to welcome you to this forum for candidates tonight. We're going to hear from candidates for District Attorney first, and then we will hear from the candidates for County Commissioner for Laramie County. I'm joined tonight with my good friend Sherri Stevens, who is going to be our timekeeper, and she will keep us from getting in trouble and going overtime. This forum is being livestreamed, so you know that, and it's tonight on Fort Collins TV. Those are channels 14 and 881. In addition, it can be followed online at FCGov.com, and I think that's a backslash FCTV. And it will be later in the week will be put on the League of Women Voters of Laramie County's website, not tonight, but a few days later. And I'd like to give a big thank you to the City of Fort Collins and the good folks that work here for providing this opportunity to present the candidate forum. As the moderator, I'll be posing questions to the candidates. Questions were solicited from the public and also from members of the League. And each candidate will have one minute to answer a question. In order to keep on time and allow all the candidates time to share their views, we will be strictly adhering to that time limit. We will open with introductory remarks from each candidate, and we will end with closing remarks from each candidate. Just a reminder, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. We do not endorse or oppose any candidate. We do take positions on some issues, but only after extensive study of that issue. By the way, men are always welcome. The League is not just for women. Some of our most active members indeed are men, and we love it when they join. By the way, we're just so pleased that these candidates have agreed to join with us today. We're going to start by letting them introduce themselves. And again, for the opening remarks, they will be limiting themselves to a minute and a half. So first, Mr. Gordon McLaughlin, candidate for District Attorney for Laramie County. Welcome to you, and please share your opening remarks.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in. Thanks to the League of Women Voters, of course, for putting this forum on. It's a really important forum. Issues of the power and discretion of the District Attorney's Office have essentially not been aired in public in about 50 years here in Laramie County. And so this is a really important panel, and I appreciate everyone's engagement. I am Gordon McLaughlin. My wife and I live here in Fort Collins and enjoy a lot of the great things that Laramie County has to offer. We love hiking in horse tooth and biking around town. I came to Laramie County via Cornell University and then CU Law School, and I've worked at a couple DA's offices around the state, and most recently was a Deputy District Attorney here in Laramie County for about seven years. I'm running for District Attorney, which is obviously what brings me in front of you here today, because I believe that we can create a safer and more inclusive Laramie County. I know firsthand the problems with the complacent criminal justice system, because I was in this office for a long time here in Laramie County. What I believe is that we can make a lot of pragmatic improvements to our criminal justice system and keep our community safe at the exact same time. I'm going to bring transparency and accountability to the Laramie County criminal justice system. I'm going to reach out to the community and not just speak to them in election years. I'm going to reduce recidivism by offering alternatives to incarceration that address crimes at the root cause and therefore get folks access to resources they need and reduce crime at the same time. I believe in Laramie County in 2020, we are strong enough to be safe and treat our neighbors with compassion, and that's why I'm running for DA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Now, Mr. Mitch Murray, also candidate for District Attorney. Welcome to you. Thank you for being with us this evening, and please share your opening remarks.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the League of Women Voters hosting this and everyone for tuning in. As was said, my name's Mitch Murray. I'm currently an Assistant District Attorney here in our DA's office, which is the 8th Judicial District, both Laramie and Jackson County. I've been an Assistant DA for almost eight years now, serving under Cliff Riedel, our elected DA. In my 30 years with this office, I prosecuted in every court that we have, starting out in county court, working through the juvenile division into district court. I was the sexual assault and crimes against children prosecutor for a period of time. And then, as I advanced and learned more about being a District Attorney, I was promoted to be a chief, and I've supervised county court, supervised district court, supervised that sex assault unit as well. Over these last years, I've been involved in the administration, both mentoring, guiding and bringing along new attorneys in working in that arena, and then also working on the budget and administration of what's a very large, very important office. You know, one thing I do agree with Gordon about is we need to do additional community outreach. We need to be more transparent. We need to have a presence out there where we can tell the public what it is we're doing, and I intend to do that. I've dedicated my life to keeping this community safe, to being a voice for victims, to working for justice in our criminal system, and I intend to keep doing that for you. So, thank you, Mitch Murray, for District Attorney.
Thank you. We're going to start the questions with Mr. Murray. We'll put him back on the speaker here. And thank you for those opening remarks from both of you. Appreciate it. So, the first question. Around the country, there are proposals to reorder the resources of law enforcement to include funding for such things as mental health intervention specialists. How do you think that might impact your work as a prosecutor, and what do you think about that approach?
You know, we've done some of that here. I'm sorry?
Again, first, Mr. Murray. Yes.
Thank you. We've done some of that here in Laramie County. We have coresponders that are a part of the law enforcement agency at Loveland Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and the Fort Collins Police Department. And I got to tell you, it's been a wonderful addition to what they are doing, having those people going out there with the mental health expertise, helping them deal with and address issues when they encounter someone that's having a mental health crisis. It's been wonderful, and I expect that that's going to continue and grow. In fact, what I've heard from the various chiefs of those agencies is that they are very pleased with it and that it will grow. You know, behind your question is kind of this idea that hinting at defunding. And I know that what we want is the best quality law enforcement we can get. We want them to be trained to handle all the different things that they might encounter. And to do that, we need to increase their training. We need to increase the resources they have in things like mental health and coresponders. And I think it's going to make our community better. It's going to make law enforcement better.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin, again, I'll repeat the question. Around the country, there are proposals to reorder the resources of law enforcement to include funding for such things as mental health intervention specialists. How do you think that might impact your work as a prosecutor, and what do you think about that approach?
Well, I think DA's and especially elected DA's need to stand up and tell the community that behavioral health resources are really important, not just for social justice, but for criminal justice. We often see the same folks back and back and back into the criminal justice system. I certainly have throughout my career. Getting folks access to mental health resources is going to reduce crime in this community. We passed a great behavioral health initiative here in Laramie County in 2018, but there's no assistance from the District Attorney's Office, no voice to the community that these are important resources, no mention of coresponders being important at that time. The coresponder programs are phenomenal, but they're incredibly small. The agencies here have only one or two coresponders. We need to be a voice to the community to tell folks why these issues are important to our community's safety, and I will absolutely speak up and do that. My wife is a social worker. I'm a career law enforcement officer. The jobs are very, very different, and we need both of those folks working together.
Thank you. Our second question, this time we're going to start with Mr. McLaughlin. The question is, do you think that cash bonds should be eliminated in nonviolent and lower level cases? Why or why not?
Well, reforming the cash bail system is important to me, and here's why. Right now, the cash bail system treats folks differently solely based on their pocketbook, not based on the crime they commit, which means that two people can commit the exact same crime with the exact same community safety risk, with the exact same victim, with the exact same criminal history. They have the same bond set, say it's $1,000. One person's going to be able to afford that, another person isn't. That means the criminal justice system is losing trust, because people see that we're treating folks differently based on their income, not based on the severity of their alleged charges. There's certainly people that are a threat to our community's safety that we need to make sure are remaining in custody if they are a threat. But there's a much greater group of folks who are low-level folks that we need to be using the discretion of the DA's office to say that these people can remain in the community if it can be done so safely, and do that so that they can keep their jobs, keep their housing, provide for their families, and keep contributing to this community on low-level offenses. That is not currently done nearly to the extent that it could be.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, I'll repeat the question. Do you think that cash bonds or cash bail should be eliminated in nonviolent and low-level cases? Why or why not?
You know, what you're talking about is removing discretion from our courts, and I do have a concern with that, because I think our courts do, in fact, react and adjust what they're doing based upon the dangerousness the person before them may present, the likelihood that they're going to reoffend, the likelihood that they may go out, even in a nonviolent offense, and harass victims or retaliate against the person that reported them. So, here in Laramie County, we have an incredibly robust pretrial release program. We have bond commissioners that are working 24/7 that can get people out on a bond where they're not having to post anything or where they don't have to wait to get before a judge. So I think we're doing a really good job in this community of avoiding the problems that may plague Denver that may plague somewhere else. I believe we can leave that discretion with court, and we can still make sure we're not holding anybody simply because of their poor. That should not happen.
Thank you. Question number three, and we're going to start with Mr. Murray. This question is, when you're asked to assess the actions of a police officer, when he or she used physical force or perhaps shot someone, what do you take into consideration?
You take all the different aspects of that case into consideration that you do in any assault. You know, law enforcement officers, we ask them to go out and do a very dangerous job and to encounter and to deal with people where they don't have really good information with which to judge what's going to occur. And so they need to be able to go out there, they need to be able to talk to someone, they need to be able to react to the situation that they're encountering. They do have a responsibility. They do have limitations based upon the law on when they can use physical force. And we'll look at that law and how it applies to what they do. But when you come down to, say, self-defense, if you're looking at an incident where someone has a deadly weapon and they're threatening that officer, they have a right to self-defense, as does anyone in our community. While we need to hold them to that higher standard because they're initiating that encounter, we also need to know that law enforcement officers aren't sent out there to get beat up. They're not sent out there to engage in mixed martial arts. They're sent out there to protect our community.
Thank you. Well, Mr. McLaughlin, I'll repeat the question. When you're asked to assess the actions of a police officer, when he or she has used physical force or perhaps shot someone, what do you take into consideration?
Well, there's a wide array of factors that you take into consideration, as you do with any case, and you need to make sure that you do a thorough job evaluating every case, including cases in which an officer may be or should be charged, on each individual fact to make sure you get it right. The DA's office has an enormous amount of power and discretion in terms of charging decisions. A lot of folks think those are left to police agencies, but the DA in all cases has the power, whether to charge or not charge a case and what to file. So those decisions are very important. The other thing that we need to do in this community is be clear with our constituents what those decisions are and what goes into each specific decision that may be based on different facts. Currently, it's just a single sheet of paper that's released and it's published online. The community needs trust in these decisions. The DA needs to make themselves available to answer questions to the community and really be thorough, because if the community doesn't believe that decision is right, right or wrong, that erodes trust in the criminal justice system, and that can impact all of our safety. So we need to be much more transparent about how those decisions are made.
Thank you. Now it's Mr. McLaughlin's turn to go first. There was a bill passed called SB 217 in the last legislative session. And do you agree with its elimination of qualified immunity defense for police officers? And that means that officers may be held personally liable for up to 5% of a judgment or settlement of $25,000, whichever is less. And this applies to areas where officers are determined not to have acted in good faith or legally. And so again, we're going to start with Mr. McLaughlin on that question.
Well, I do support where that bill came out, and here's why. Certainly, there are a lot of folks arguing to go a lot further with that about putting officers at risk of liability for even good faith mistakes that they were making. I was against the bill started on qualified immunity, and I communicated that to the public and to our legislators, because I thought that went too far, and we were going to lose good law enforcement officers with that. But where it came out, I think, is fair, and the reason is that, as public servants, we need to know what the lines are, and we need to know that we're going to be held accountable in the community. So those limits, the fact that those are legal limits, we're not relying on any elected DA in any given jurisdiction, which there are many of in Colorado, but that the state has said that folks should be protected, and that if wrongdoing occurs, the police are going to be held accountable for that, and that they have some skin in the game. And I think where it came out is fair.
Okay. Mr. Murray, again, the question has to do with Senate Bill 217, which was passed in the last legislative session. And do you agree with the language it contains, which includes elimination of the qualified immunity defense for police officers, which states that officers may be held personally liable for up to 5% of a judgment or a settlement of $25,000, whichever is less? And this would only apply to areas where officers are determined not to have acted in good faith or legally?
You know, it's interesting. The qualified immunity comes from federal lawsuits. And so what that said is that if law enforcement officers were acting in their professional capacity, in what they were expected to do, they would have this qualified immunity from suit. And we give that to people because we're asking them to make very difficult decisions, sometimes at a moment's notice. But that immunity did not or does not exist if they're breaking the law or otherwise acting in bad faith. The way this statute ended up, I think, is okay. I'm very troubled by it, because I think it's put a target on law enforcement officers back, and there's going to be a lot more people who are, and we see it every day, out there with their cameras, trying to test them, trying to get them upset, trying to create some kind of environment where they can be sued. The fact that we have it now, where if they're acting in good faith, the coverage from their employer takes care of them, I think is a very important improvement to that. You know, law enforcement officers always... Sorry.
That was very, very kind of you to stop right there. Appreciate it. The next question is yours, Mr. Murray. What role can the District Attorney play in addressing the opioid crisis in Laramie County and the promotion of wellness court where appropriate? And are there any other tools besides wellness court?
You know, the wellness court is a very important tool for people who have very serious drug addiction problems. And while the opioid problem is an incredibly serious issue, and it does result in overdose deaths and destroys many people's lives, here in Laramie County, meth is a much bigger issue. It still remains one of the drugs that hurts people, destroys families, and causes crime. At the DA's office, what we need to do is partner with the folks in this community who have the treatment options available to them, so that we can get these people hooked up with that, and encourage them, through the way we handle our cases, to get into that treatment and to stay with that treatment. Mr. McLaughlin talked about our behavioral health facility and the funding that's available through that, I think, in his opening statements. And when that agency is up and running, we're going to have great resources available. It'll be important for us to make sure we're making the best use of that possible, that we're collaborating with the people that have the information on how to best address that problem, and that we do it.
Thank you. And Mr. McLaughlin, I'll repeat the question. What role can the District Attorney's Office play in addressing the opioid crisis in Laramie County and promotion of the use of wellness court where appropriate? And are there other tools besides wellness court? And of course, addressing meth is absolutely fine as well.
Well, absolutely. I mean, we have a serious substance abuse crisis in this community and a serious mental health crisis in this community. The specialty courts like wellness court are fantastic programs, but they have only limited ability to accept people. They're small, and they're often full. The behavioral health facility is great. Again, that's the type of thing that I would have spoken up for in the community. That program failed back in 2016. So we in law enforcement knew that that was an issue for the community, and someone should have stood up to say that. If that did not happen, I will do that. But then even besides that program, what the DA can do on their own is what I will do, which is create a significant adult diversion program, which means that folks, low-level, nonviolent folks, that got into the criminal justice system because of one of those issues, and so many folks do, so many folks that we all know in our lives, they can go straight to that treatment. They're not sitting around for months or years in the criminal justice system waiting to be ordered to treatment, but they can go right away. And if they're successful, then they can get out of the criminal justice system quickly as well and get back to contributing to this community.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. McLaughlin. What is the District Attorney's Office's role in ensuring that fair housing guidelines are being enforced in Laramie County? Is there a role?
Well, I think the District Attorney has a role in partnering with a lot of our community organizations that we have not. Housing is absolutely a big part of why we see folks come into the criminal justice system. And looking at that last question, you pointed out two big ones, which are substance abuse and mental health. Housing is another one. Food insecurity is another one. While the DA is not going to be in charge of those programs by any means, the DA does have a role in collaborating with our partners to make sure that when folks come into the criminal justice system, whether that's a defendant, a victim, anyone, we make sure that we get them help, because that's going to improve the health and safety of our whole community.
Thank you. What is the District Attorney's Office's role in ensuring that fair housing guidelines are being enforced in the county?
And I'm going to confess to you, I have not read the fair housing guidelines to determine exactly what crimes may be built in there. The District Attorney's Office's role is to prosecute violations of state law in our state courts. And if there are criminal penalties and criminal violations built into that, our obligation is to look at those cases as we do any other, determine whether we have a case that can be proven beyond a reasonable doubt, and if so, move forward with it with an eye towards trying to improve things, trying to get people to do things the right way, and deter others who may commit that kind of a violation. You know, I had occasion to meet with some folks from a group called Fuse, and they're very active in trying to find housing for people who are having mental health or substance issues. And I do agree with the idea that with many people, if we can get them into something like that, it's going to decrease the likelihood that they're continuing to commit crime. And I look forward to being able to work with groups like that in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, what goals should you or your office have regarding reducing prison overcrowding?
Well, what we should be doing in every case is making the right decision to protect the community, to rehabilitate the defendant, to deter others from committing that crime. When I look at what's happened in our prison populations right now, and I've gone through some of the statistics about the people that have gone to prison out of the 8th Judicial District, and I think we're doing a really good job of trying to send the right people there, people that have shown they're going to continue to violate the law, that they're going to continue to create safety issues in our community, or people who have been put on probation, been put on community corrections, and they continue to violate the rules, they continue to break the law. So there's got to be a place where those people can go, when the punishment fits that crime, when their behavior has shown that if they're not incarcerated, they do present that danger. By doing what we're supposed to be doing every day, by making the correct decisions, by looking at each individual case, trying to figure out the best way to protect the community and rehabilitate the defendant, we can achieve that to some degree while still protecting people.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin, the question again. What goals should you or your office have regarding reducing prison overcrowding?
Well, there is a prison overcrowding issue and also locally a jail overcrowding issue. Laramie County Commissioners passed a $75 million jail expansion last year. The biggest, the agency with the biggest say in who's in jail, a lot of folks think that's the sheriff. It's not. It's the DA's office. The DA's office is going to have the biggest say in who is sitting in jail. In pre-pandemic times, Laramie County Jail holds between 500 and 600 people a day. That's before any jail expansion. Now that we're building a new one, I'm sure that there are folks that want to fill it. So we need to address these things. Absolutely, there are folks that deserve to be in jail, that deserve to be in prison. I've prosecuted many of those folks throughout my career, but there's a much greater number of people that need access to resources, so they stop committing those crimes. You just heard about folks that are coming back and back and back and eventually deserve it. That's true. We need to get to those folks before they keep coming back and back and back. That comes with things like diversion, restorative justice programs aimed at young adults and nonviolent low-level offenders, so that they never get to that point in the first place.
There's a related question that I'm going to add because of what you all have been saying, and that is, what might be the role of your office in guiding how we deal with the homeless population, which I think tend to also interact with the legal system pretty regularly? So we'll start with Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Absolutely. And sometimes those folks are the folks that are repeat players, along with a lot of other people. At the municipal level, the District Attorney prosecutes almost every crime in Laramie County, but at the municipal level, there's some very low-level crimes that they prosecute. And they have a whole team, a collaborative team, DA's, defense attorneys, judges, folks from homeless services, housing services, and others sit down, and when there's a problem with a specific person coming back, they say, how can we help them get over these issues? Right? In the county system, the DA's office, often, all we end up doing is doubling punishments each time. Jail is unfortunately not a deterrent for everyone, and there are folks, whether it's in a homeless or transient community, that jail is not a huge deterrent for. What we need to do is make sure that we are addressing the problems, addressing the root causes that got them into the criminal justice system, so that we can reduce crime and keep the community safer. So I will work with all those partners and create a similar team for folks that are coming into the system.
Oh, Mr. Murray, again, what might be the role of the DA's office related to the homeless?
You know, oftentimes, people who are homeless are also dealing with mental health or substance abuse issues. And at the District Attorney's Office, we started a pilot program for an adult mental health diversion program. I think Cliff Riedel agreed that this office, our office here, would be a part of that pilot program back in 2018. And that program was designed, really, to try and intercept people with mental health issues, divert them out of the criminal justice system, and connect them with services. What I'd like to do is expand that program and include not just people with mental health problems, but those with substance abuse, addiction issues, and try to connect them with the services that are available in this community. And we have a wide range of services, and those that are going to be put online by the behavioral health facility when it comes in. And I think what we can do is we can take those people, divert them out quickly, connect them with folks who can help them with housing, help them with the issues that are causing them problems, whether that's getting to a doctor, getting a driver's license, whatever it might be, and try and keep them out of the criminal justice system.
Thank you. So, Mr. Murray, I'll ask you the next question. Is there overrepresentation of minorities in the incarcerated population, prisons, jails, et cetera? And is there a role that the DA's office can play related to that issue?
You know, when I looked at the statistics for the people that were going into custody out of the 8th Judicial District, there was an overrepresentation of minorities. There was a slightly higher percentage of African-American individuals, Hispanic individuals that were in our jail. Actually, this was just in the Department of Corrections. And it's something that we need to be aware of and that we need to pay attention to. You know, there's a lot of things that contribute to why a person's going to commit crime. One of the biggest things is lack of opportunity and poverty. And unfortunately, minorities are overrepresented in that group. I think what we need to do at the District Attorney's Office is continue to educate ourselves, continue to challenge ourselves, make sure we're looking at people and making the decisions for the right reason, and that bias and things like that aren't playing a role in that. We need to work to connect people with services, with things that can help break that cycle, help get them out of maybe criminal thinking and get on a better path.
I'm going to ask Mr. Murray this question. These are related questions, so I'll ask you the second question, and then I'll ask Mr. McLaughlin both questions as well. So it's a related question. When charges are filed, should your office keep statistics on ethnicity, race, gender, religion, or sexual orientation? Why or why not?
We've recently begun putting up on our website statistics about who's coming in and what kind of cases we're filing, and that's an effort to be more transparent. As part of the 217 that you talked about includes gathering up that kind of demographics of the people that are being prosecuted, and I think it's important that we put that out there. And I'm going to do that when I'm your District Attorney. We will have statistics out there, talking about the demographics of who's coming in, talking about what kind of charges are being filed. So yes, I think we do need to do that, and you know, we can't be afraid of the numbers. We have to deal with life as it comes at us, and we have to address the issues as we see them. So I'm excited about seeing that develop in the future, as those numbers start to be kept by law enforcement. I'm going to add one thing. Right now, you don't get that, because those pieces of information are kept in a variety of places, and the consistency on how they were kept in the past doesn't contribute to the reliability. Hopefully, with what's enacted in 217, it will be.
Thank you very much. And Mr. McLaughlin, I'll ask you the same question. Again, there are two questions, so we'll start with one. Is there overrepresentation of minorities in the incarcerated population, both in prisons and jails, et cetera? And is there a role that the DA's office can play related to that issue?
Well, I think nationally, we have seen very clearly that there's an overrepresentation of folks in prisons and jails, folks charged, folks harmed or killed by police officers. There's absolutely an overrepresentation of people of color. Unfortunately, this is the first that I think anyone is hearing that there's also an overrepresentation of people of color going to prison from Laramie County. These are statistics that I've been talking to the public, I wish we had for a long time, and this is the first we're hearing about it. So the question is, why? There's a lot we can do about it here in Laramie County, but first, we actually need to gather, to collect, and analyze, and release that data. My opponent and his administration have had decades to do just that, and apparently, it's still in all sorts of places, and we're just hearing these statistics. I think I have two minutes, though, right?
You've got, the second question is, I'll start it. When charges are filed, should your office keep statistics? So yes, go ahead.
Thanks.
About a minute and 15 now.
Perfect. So we do. The district attorney is the only one seeing all the crime in Laramie County. We have, you know, over 10 different law enforcement agencies, police agencies reporting, so the district attorney needs to take responsibility for this. And those law enforcement agencies aren't in charge of what the sentencing outcome is, what the plea deal offer is, who's going to prison, who's going to jail, who's getting probation. That's all a DA's decision, so they need to be the one to keep track of that data. I will absolutely do that. I'm not saying this because it's an election year. Folks have had decades in charge of that office to release data, and the fact that that process is just beginning is a serious problem. I will be very transparent with this community, and that is the first step in earning this community's trust, making sure that we have equal justice for everyone in this community, and that is a priority for me.
Okay. And now, this is the final question, and we'll start with Mr. McGlaughlin. It's related to what you all have been talking about. Are there any major changes in the DA's office that you would like to implement if elected, and why are those changes necessary?
Well, you've heard about a lot of them. First is a diversion program. You heard about a very small pilot program. Some of our neighboring counties are putting thousands of people, low-level, nonviolent young adults, through diversion programs. It is a completely different beast. That's what we need to be doing here, for serious about treating our neighbors with compassion, giving folks second chances, that deserves second chances, and holding people accountable in ways that are going to address the root causes of that problem. Also, bail reform, we talked about, that is something that we need to modify as well. But there's also a culture problem. We need to change law enforcement and the DA's office so that it's not a culture where we are rewarding trial victories and long sentences. I pride myself on my trial skills, I've won a lot of them, but that's not why I got into public service, and that's not why I believe most folks at the DA's office did either. We need to reward people for taking a step back and looking at the bigger picture and a holistic perspective of justice, and understanding things like unconscious bias and the racial disparities in the system. We need to be talking to the staff about that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, again, this is your final question. Are there any major changes in the DA's office that you'd like to implement if elected, and why are those changes important or necessary?
Well, I'm first going to comment on statistics. The ones I was citing and referring to, they're on the state's database for the Department of Corrections, so they're there for anybody to see, and they've been there for a while. In my administration, I do want to increase our community outreach. I do want to meet with the different communities that make up our jurisdiction and be able to sit down and talk with them, hear from them what concerns they have, answer their questions, if they can be answered. And I think by doing that, not only can I improve what the district attorney's office is doing, but I think we can rebuild some of the trust that's been lost by the public in the criminal justice system. I do intend to increase transparency. I've talked some about the statistics that I think we've already begun to put out to the public, and will continue to put out to the public. What I want to do as district attorney is make sure we are continuing to train the best prosecutors possible, that we're mentoring them to seek justice, to look at people, to try to determine, how can I both protect the community and rehabilitate people? And we'll keep doing that. Thank you.
You're doing so well, you know, we are at time for closing the comments, and because you're doing so well, Sharon, let's give them a minute and a half for their closing comments. They've been so good at staying on time. So we'll start with Mr. Murray.
You know, ladies and gentlemen, I do appreciate you watching this, and I urge you to research your candidates, know your candidates, learn something about them. And I think when you research myself, what you'll find is that I have dedicated my professional life to protecting this community, to seeking justice, to being a voice for victims. If you look through the endorsements, you'll see that I'm a compassionate person who cares about people, who understands the pain and suffering a victim can go through when they're brought into the criminal justice system, and realize that our office has a very important vital role in dealing with that, in helping them work their way through that system. I have the experience managing, mentoring, supervising attorneys that my client doesn't have, frankly. I have the relationships that have been built with law enforcement over this 30 years, where we have a mutual respect. They understand that I'm going to hold them accountable. They understand that we're going to call them when there's a problem. But they also understand that we respect what they do, and they respect what we do. Our decisions, we are all pursuing community safety and justice, but we come at it from a slightly different angle. With my history and experience that I have, with the work that I've done, I can lead this office forward, improving our criminal justice system, maintaining this beautiful community we have, and contributing to community safety. So I ask for your vote. Make sure you research us. Mitch Murray for district attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McGlaughlin, your closing comments, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. We are facing a crisis of confidence in law enforcement and the criminal justice system right now, especially this year, as folks have seen in the last six months. And the truth is, change is not going to come from within the system. Both myself and my opponent are career prosecutors. We're both experienced. This election comes down to folks getting to vote on vision and on values. I've been all around Laramie County and Jackson County in the 8th Judicial Districts over the last year, talking to a lot of people, and I ask them if they know who the district attorney is in Laramie County. Almost no one does. That's unacceptable if we're trying to actually earn trust of this community and deserve the trust of this community. What I bring are new ideas to solve the new problems that we have in Laramie County, and a bigger vision to solve the bigger problems that we have as we grow and we change in Laramie County. We talked about some of those things, the mental health crisis, the substance abuse crisis, homelessness in Laramie County. If we keep doing things the same way and think that they're going to change, that's not going to happen. We need new ideas, we need to be collaborative with our partners. There is a way to keep this community safe, to put folks that are dangerous to this community in jail and in prison, but also to take a step back and to give others the opportunities to improve and to not recidivate, and that will contribute to the health and safety of this community. I'm the only candidate that brings those ideas and that vision to the table. Please go to McGlaughlinForDA.com to learn more, and I hope to earn your vote in November.
Thank you, gentlemen. We really appreciate you being with us tonight and all your comments, and we appreciate that you really stuck with the time limits that we put on. I know it's hard when these are complicated questions to keep it to one minute. We thank you very much. We're going to have a very brief break here before we go to the county commissioner candidates. Thank you, gentlemen, Mr. McGlaughlin, Mr. Murray.
Good night.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. This is the second half of our forum this evening, and we have the pleasure of welcoming candidates for county commissioner for Laramie County. And we have four candidates, Kristin Stevens and Bob McCluskey are candidates for District Two, and Jody Shattuck McNally and Ben Osti are candidates for District Three. And a reminder that as a voter in Laramie County, you actually vote for both districts, so you will have two votes here, one for District, one person for District Two and one for District Three. We'll start with our introductions, and we're going to ask our candidates to provide their opening remarks in a minute and a half or 90 seconds, and we'll start in alphabetical order. And then when we go into questions, I will keep rotating who's first, but you will always be up next, if I think you understand the role. So with that, Mr. Osti, would you like to give your opening remarks after you, there we go?
Sure. Yes, thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this, well done. And my name is Ben Osti, I'm running for Laramie County District Three for county commissioner, and I bring 38 years of business experience in this county, having lived here for nearly five decades. My roots grow deep here. I also have been a stakeholder on three county concerns here, and still am, the Big Thompson Reclamation Project, the 402 corridor expansion, and my favorite, the Laramie County landfill. I also have been on a water and sanitation district board, sat on that, and I've been very involved in shadowing all the commissioners for several years now, going to planning commission meetings and so forth. I have a wife that I've been married to now for 38 years here, two children and grandchildren, and this county has been very good to us, so I'm very thankful to be able to run. We have now diverted over 3 million tons and counting of new and usable building materials from the landfill. That is from our business, 25 years old now, called Uncle Benny's Building Supplies. That is a nickname, Uncle Benny, you can call me that if you want to, but I am known as that in town here, and started here in ninth grade milking cows, actually, and I've done quite a few different jobs. I've been through six disasters here in this county, and I believe that will be helpful. Ah.
Happens to all of us.
That was, that was my dear 85-year-old mother who lives right in the house, right in the backyard, so she did not know we were doing this, I apologize.
Good. Thank you. Mr. McCluskey?
Thank you. I'm Bob McCluskey, and I grew up in Fort Collins. I would like to thank the League for putting us on tonight and giving us your time. Grew up in Fort Collins, graduated from Fort Collins High School, went on to an undergraduate and MBA from Stanford. I came back and worked in the family business, Putter Valley Creamery and Loveland City Dairy. I learned how to drive a truck, work on the dock, make ice cream, create jobs, and meet a budget. During that time, I was elected to the Fort Collins City Council, and later on, twice, to the Colorado House of Representatives. I've also given back to the community. I've been chairman of the Putter Fire Authority Board, I've been chairman of the Fort Collins Parks and Recreation Board, a board member of the Fort Collins Rotary Club, a board member of the Community Foundation, and the first chairman of the Juvenile Services Planning Committee. When I started this race, I talked about important issues, creating more high-paying jobs in Laramie County, keeping taxes low, protecting our natural resources and our private property rights, fixing the transportation system, and standing up to Denver politicians. Well, things have changed. With the advent of the coronavirus, and more recently, of the Cameron Peak fire, we're in a situation now where the county needs to spend a lot of time on recovery work and doing it right. I look at my experience in the past as far as business and in the public sector, and feel that'll be important moving forward to deal with these issues. I'm Bob McCluskey. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Ms. Shattuck McNally.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to the Legal Women Voters for this opportunity tonight. I am Jody Shattuck McNally, and I'm running to serve you as your next Laramie County Commissioner for District Three. County commissioners impact your daily life from the roads you drive on, your access to housing, public safety, mental health services, open spaces, and more. Commissioners have never been more important than now, as we recover from the COVID pandemic, economic strains, and the Cameron Peak wildfire. I was born and raised here in Northern Colorado. This is my home, and I value our natural resources. As a mother of three children, I know the importance of affordable childcare and housing. As a lifelong advocate and volunteer serving my community for decades, I know the importance of working together to find solutions. I'm running for commissioner to make sure that Laramie County is a great place for us to live for all, and I'm running to support the COVID recovery and ensure clean air and water, affordable housing, and sustainable growth for generations to come. I have a proven track record as a community leader, as serving on the Office on Aging as a convener, I have organized fraud and scams forums, and advocated for caregivers. I served on the lead team for the successful 2018 Mental Health Initiative, and brought resources to the county. I have worked on Colorado legislation twice that brought resources back to our schools, and I'm a successful co-founder of a national project that required federal legislation where I partnered with our Congressman Jody, excuse me, Congressman Joe Nogus. My name is Jody Shag McNally. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll have Ms. Stevens. You have 90 seconds for your opening remarks.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much to the League for hosting tonight. We're so glad to be with you and residents of the county to learn about our county commissioner candidates. So my name is Kristin Stevens. I currently serve on the Fort Collins City Council, and have for five years. I also am the mayor pro tem of the city of Fort Collins, so I have a lot of experience with regional governments. I believe that local government can be a force for good, and I first learned that as a young mother in Fort Collins when I was going to school at CSU. And during this time, I was struggling to pay rent and to go to school and work a full-time job, and the dollars that I got from the childcare assistance dollars through the county were a lifeline for me and my young son. And we were, I was able to finish my degree and stay in Fort Collins and be able to get a job with benefits. And I know so many other families in our community are struggling, especially with COVID. Even before COVID, we had 20%, almost 20% of our population is under the poverty line. And after COVID, we just know that so many people and businesses are dealing with loss, loss of wages, loss of social activities, loss of, you know, loved ones, and so we really need to work on COVID recovery. This is something that I'll do. Also, our smoke-filled skies make us need to work on climate change more than ever. So, and finally, county government needs to be more transparent, and we need to build more equity into county government. I thank you, and I look forward to our questions tonight.
Thank you. And I will next start with the questions, and I will again start in the same order, and then we'll start rotating. So again, Mr. Osti, you'll be first, and this question actually has, there actually are two questions, and so you have a minute for each, and I will repeat the second one for you, if that's helpful. Revenue issues are very important in the county commissioner's work. The first question is, with expected shortfalls in revenue due to the recent downturn in the economy, what are your priorities for retaining important services? Let's repeat that one first, and then I'll repeat the second one.
Okay. Okay. I have talked with Linda Hoffman, the county manager, and also Josh Fudge, the budget man, and they are looking at some tightening-the-belt-ish situations right now, of course, as we might have expected, and they're doing a fine job. They're actually shifting some monies that were allocated to one area to another because of what's happened. A lot of folks are working remotely now. And so obviously, right now, the, one of the biggest priorities and concerns seems to be ramping the businesses up safely as possible, as soon as possible, before we lose any more, that we've already, we've already lost a number of them. I don't know exactly how many, but we have quite a few that are on the brink of giving it up, and they just can't go any further with six or seven months into this pandemic crisis we have. So that is what I'd be looking at, and they're doing a good job of already looking at the budget cuts that need to be done, and I am impressed with how they're doing that right now. So thank you.
Good. And the second question, Mr. Osti, is, what concerns do you have about any issues on the ballot, the state ballot, related to reductions of tax revenue?
Hmm. I don't know exactly if you're referring to possibly the Tabor and the Gallagher. I'd like to see those stay in place. I think they balance each other out. That does have relation to the 29% taxes that are collected on commercial properties, and then we have, of course, the residential side, so you have a 55%, 45% that does balance each other out. And so that is concerning, and I'll keep my eye on that. I will be probably talking to more, more about this with the folks at the county, the assessor's office, and the clerk and recorder, and so on.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to Mr. McCluskey, and again, the questions are about revenue, revenue being very important to the role of the county commissioner's work. The first question is, with expected shortfalls in revenue due to the recent downturn in the economy, what are your priorities for retaining important services?
Thank you. Having been on the city council and in the state legislature, when we've made cuts, we've been very thoughtful in going through this, to think about what are your core services the county needs to do? And I think the proposals they've talked about so far at the county, talk about the one-time things, some of the funds they can shift, slow down some of the capital projects, and looking at those because it's a temporary thing when you approach it. It's always much more difficult in the next year, and the state will see this, when you have to make deeper cuts, which they're based more on sales tax and income tax than we are at the county. So look at core services, make the cuts you can in the first year, and then hope the second year works out better.
Thank you. The second question, related to revenue, what concerns do you have about any issues on the statewide ballot related to reductions of tax revenue?
Well, clearly, the important ballot issue that the county is looking at is the Gallagher Amendment. And when people look at that, they have to realize what we're saying is, under the current mix, you have a certain percentage that the residential pay, and the others pay the rest of it. of it. As those go down, the potential is the county might have a fourteen million dollar shortfall coming out of that, not this year, but next year. That's concerning. You can see last year on the ballot, uh, a lot of the fire departments, uh, put in provisions to take care of that. Uh, that's gonna be an important issue and painful to the county if it does pass.
Okay, thank you. Um, next, that, next we move on to Ms. Shattuck McNally. And again, I'll repeat the question. Revenues are very important in the, uh, the role of the county commissioners and the work that's done by them. With the expected shortfall in revenue due to the recent downturn in the economy, what are your priorities for retaining important services?
Well, thank you for that question. We have, um, I have attended, uh, two different budget retreats now with the county commissioners and a county manager. And I've met a couple times with, uh, the county budget director, Josh Fudge, and the uh, county director, uh, manager, Linda Hoffman. And we've had lots of conversations. I've listened to many of the meetings, attended those forums. And I know, as Bob mentioned, looming on the horizon is that, um, shortfall of the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one budget and twenty-twenty-two, where we know that the uh, decrease in assessment from the Gallagher Amendment will probably, um, bring a shortfall to our county. I know that the, like, already, the county has asked departments to reduce their budgets by five percent and most of those have stepped up for the future budget. And they're doing what they can to, um, be proactive in addressing that. Um, if, if that, um, assessment, um, ticks down to five point eight-eight percent, we will have some challenges ahead. And so I think going forward, we need to work together and, and look at those projects and where we can, um, keep those services in place.
Thank you. The second part of that, of that larger question is, what concerns do you have about issues that are on the statewide ballot related to reductions of tax revenue?
Well, um, on the tip, on the, our current, um, upcoming ballot will be addressing the Gallagher Amendment. And I do believe that the interaction of Tabor and the Gallagher Amendment has produced many, um, conundrums for Colorado and indirectly impacts our county and our school districts and our fire districts. I know as, uh, has been mentioned, um, some of those have, have taken measures to, uh, de-bruce those, um, those issues. And I think, uh, going forward, I'm gonna be supporting that because I do think it is detrimental to those districts that rely on, on that assessment. And it, and if you wanna look at that, those details, it only freezes it at seven percent. It's a very complicated issue. I, I encourage voters to, um, read up on that because it does impact, um, so much in our county and it will, and, and impact our budget going forward.
Ms. Stevens, um, your turn. Again, the questions are about revenue. With expected shortfall in revenue due to the recent downturn in the economy, what are your priorities for retaining important services?
Sure. Um, well, I'm working on the budget right now with the city of Fort Collins, so I'm familiar with budget cuts. So, we are in a similar situation where, uh, we don't have enough revenue, um, don't have the revenue that was expected before COVID. So, um, one, one thing we can't do is cut crucial social services to folks who are already in, um, in desperate need. So, we can't do things like cut childcare, which is, which is needed to get folks back to work. We can't cut social service programs that help with food insecurity. Uh, we, we need to make sure that we're, uh, taking care of our individuals and our businesses in our community. So we need to make sure that those funds stay in place so that people can get back to work, can get back on their feet. Um, you know, I've met with the budget director as well and I think that the county has some good plans for, um, tightening its belt and I certainly, you know, wanna make sure that we do that and, um, but I think sometimes it's okay to dip into reserves as long as you have a plan for paying those back. And, um, you know, to make sure that people recover, we might just need to do that.
Thank you. What concerns do you have about the statewide issues on the ballot related to the, related to reductions of tax revenue?
Sure. So, um, you know, the question's been answered pretty well. I mean, the Gallagher Amendment, obviously, um, is, is troublesome for local government. And so, you know, I think that, uh, I mean, it, it is on the ballot and it, it could mean that we have, um, you know, that, that our, that our budget stays somewhat the same or flat, or, or it could, we could really lose a lot of dollars. And so, um, it's up to folks how they wanna deal with that. Uh, you know, I will, uh, listen to the will of the people. Um, I certainly think that, uh, you know, I, as I said, I believe in the, that government can do good. And so, you know, I think that if we have those tax, extra tax dollars, we will be able to help more folks and help more businesses in our community. Um, if we don't, we'll ha- just have to do a little bit more, um, belt tightening. But either way, um, I'm prepared to do that. I have a lot of experience in budgeting from, uh, serving on the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So McCloskey, you're up next with the, with the question number two. And on this one, boy, we actually have three parts to it, so this is gonna take a while. You get, you get the floor for a while.
Okay.
And the first question is, what can we do at the local level to both ride out this pandemic and prepare for any future threats?
At the local level? Um, I think people are realizing, as we go through the coronavirus response now, how important the local level is, uh, to work with businesses, to work with childcare centers, to work with the schools, to get the right answer. Uh, I think in the future, I would do something differently. I think in the last go-around, um, we had too much of the top-down response to the issues. I think we have better answers locally. As I've talked to businesses and even in schoolteachers, uh, have had ideas on how to respond to it safely. And because of the timing and the slowness of the, the state government, uh, they slowed down their process. So I would think the local level is, is more important at this point. And if we, if we get away from one size fits all and we let the local people be creative, I think we can do a much better job if it comes back. A lot of, uh, people think it will come back, uh, but I, I think it, we can do it locally better if we have more freedom to come up with our own answers in a safe way.
The second question is related, of course, and again for Mr. McCloskey. As elected officials, as the elected officials managing the county, how can you support the work of the public health officials who have been attacked, threatened, fired, forced to resign and undercut in many parts of our state and throughout the nation?
Well, clearly that hasn't happened here. Uh, I think Tom Gonzalez and his staff have done an amazing job. We realize, even at the state level, this is something new. Uh, we weren't prepared for it. I think they've done a great job of responding. Uh, if you look at the team that, uh, Director Gonzalez has put together, both from the testing standpoint and from the, uh, contact tracing standpoint, uh, they've done a very good job of putting a team together and I think the results are starting to show. Um, I do not think, as public officials, if people disagree with them, uh, they should be subject to that kind of behavior. And again, I haven't seen that here and it shouldn't happen. Uh, if people disagree, that's fine. That's part of our process. Uh, but as far as attacking public officials and/or their families, uh, I think there should be no room for that. I don't agree with that at all.
Thank you. Then the part three of that question, it's a long question. Do you support the state mandates that have been given regarding the pandemic from the governor and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment? For example, do you support wearing masks, limiting gatherings, et cetera?
Um, as I said earlier, I think the state is responding, uh, and it's something new that they haven't had a lot of experience with. I do support a lot of things the governor has done. I'll go back to the piece though. Uh, I, again, I've talked to people in the county and the businesses around town that when they've talked about a new mandate coming up, uh, they set a date, they get to the date and there's no guidelines, or the guidelines have been vague on what to do. I think we can do better with that. I think, uh, we, we look to our people here in Lammert County, that they've done a good job of being safe, following the protocols. I personally, uh, have a mask with me when I go to meetings and I wear it. Uh, I think it makes sense. I think our numbers are reflective of that. Uh, but again, I think it's up to individual people to take care of themselves where the county will do better.
Okay. Uh, and now we're gonna move on to Ms. Shattuck McNally. And again, it's a three-part question. We'll keep you on the stage for a while. What can we do at the local level to both ride out the pandemic and prepare for any future threat?
Um, thank you for that question. I think that we have to continue to be vigilant, hand-washing, um, wearing our masks and avoiding large crowds and following the, the guidelines set forth from Lammert County and the State Department of Health. We have come a long way in bringing down our numbers and keeping our, our, our family, friends and neighbors safe. We need to follow the science and the data and, and follow that data-driven approach. Um, thank goodness we have some great community partners with CSU that has helped with, uh, um, shortening our testing turnaround. We are now up from twenty-seven percent of our testing at two to three days turnaround to over eighty percent. And that's thank, that's thanks to the work of the Lammert County Health Department, Tom Gonzalez and CSU. And because of that, we have contact tracing and we can, um, those measures going forward and working together with businesses, nonprofits, schools, all of us need to do our part to help navigate through this pandemic going forward.
Thank you. As elected officials managing the county, which the county commissioners are, how can you support the work of the public health officials who have been attacked, threatened, fired, forced to resign and undercut in many parts of our state and throughout the nation?
Well, um, first, publicly, we need to show strong leadership by, um, stating our support of the county health director. As you know, the county, um, commissioners report to Board of Health who hire and oversee the county health director. And we need to, um, uh, support him and his staff going forward, ask good questions and su- um, support him with the data, science, uh, resources, money and, and resources he needs, um, and his department needs to do the job. I think we have to show a public face and show, um, that we are supportive of those measures and, um, be that public face going forward. I do agree that we do not, we should not be publicly attacking our public officials or their families and, um, publicly, leading by example by wearing masks and avoiding large crowds and, and leading by example going forward for our county.
Thank you. The third part of that question, do you support the state mandates that have been given regarding the pandemic from the governor and from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment? For example, do you support wearing masks, limiting gatherings, et cetera?
So, my family has been directly impacted by the pandemic. My husband works in the emergency rooms, all of them in Lammert County except one in Estes Park. My husband had to live in the basement away from us for weeks. And my daughter was exposed on a school trip, on a, a school trip to Washington DC and we had her isolated upstairs for two weeks. So I am very worried, um, about, you know, the pandemic and I do support wearing masks because I have seen what this, um, what this virus can do. My mother is co- um, immune compromised with, um, I, I just lost my father. He would not have made it if he had been exposed to this. My, and so I have a lot of friends who are older adults who are also immune compromised and I would not wanna make anyone sick. So I do support wearing masks, um, washing our hands, social distancing and being respectful and responsible, um, individuals here in Lammert County. We all have to do our part and, um, I, I want to do that, um, the best way I can by, by wearing my mask going out. Thank you.
Good. Uh, next up is Ms. Stevens. And again, it's a three-part question. So the first one is, what can we do at the local level to both ride out this pandemic and prepare for any future threat?
Um, well, I think that we've been doing a good job in our county, uh, by, by doing exactly what Jody and Bob said, you know, mask-wearing, social distancing, uh, washing our hands. Uh, you know, I think that our county has, and our city, um, have, have done a really good job of, of, of dealing with that. You know, as far as, um, this, this pandemic, I mean, we, we need to support businesses and we need to make sure that they have a way to, to stay in operation. So I think that some of the plans for moving businesses outside, um, so they can continue, um, serving people, um, is really good. And I know that we're working at that at the city level as well. Um, you know, future, you talked about future threats. I mean, future threats can be anything from pandemics to, uh, you know, extreme weather events, uh, because of climate change. So, we have a lot of work to do around resiliency in our community. Um, I'm, I'm willing to tackle that work. I think we need to face it head-on. We definitely need, need to listen to the science, both on climate change and the pandemic, and make sure that we're letting data lead the way.
Thank you. As elected officials managing the county, which the county commissioners are and do, how can you support the work of the public health officials who've been attacked, threatened, fired, forced to resign and undercut in many parts, in many parts of our state as well as in the nation?
Yeah, I think this actually happened in a neighboring county and it's just shameful to me that somebody would attack someone because they're trying to do their job and keep people healthy and safe. So, uh, we haven't seen that in our community, but we certainly have attacks. I've experienced that on city council. I mean, our, our city was sued by a candidate that's running for office because of the mask mandate. So, uh, there's definitely, this shouldn't be a political issue, folks. This is, this is science. This is about protecting people who are vulnerable. Um, the, Tom Gonzalez, the director of the Health Department, and, uh, estimated that we had about a third, almost a third of the county that's vulnerable because of, um, pre-existing conditions. These are people that we love. These are people that we work with. These are our friends and neighbors. Uh, we need to keep people safe, uh, and we need to make sure that we are, uh, listening to science and protecting the people who are delivering that message.
And finally, do you support the state mandates that have been given regarding the pandemic from the governor and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment?
Yeah, I absolut- absolutely support those mandates. Um, you know, uh, we didn't get leadership from the, the federal government on this issue. Uh, the, the governors were left up to their own devices and some states have done better than others. Our state has been able to stay open because we have these mandates. We, we, we can stay open for business because we require masks. Uh, we see other states, their numbers are skyrocketing. So, uh, there again, I think our governor is listening to science and listening to the science on this issue. If, if counties are doing better, they get a little more freedom. If they're doing worse, those, some of those freedoms get picked back a little bit. But it's all about saving lives and protecting the public. That's our number one job as, as public officials. And, you know, letting separate counties go willy-nilly, that's, I don't think that that's a good process. We need to make sure that we're all protecting Colorado residents and, uh, I think the governor's done a great job. I support him and I support all those mandates.
Thank you. Mr. Osti, you're last on this question. And again, um, the first ques- part of the question is, what can we do at the local level to both ride out this pandemic and prepare for any future threat?
Well, I did spend a lot of time talking with Lori Hodges and Laura Levy and, uh, sent a lot of folks to them on actually their request because they wanted to hear from the business owners, because who knows their business better than they do? Because they wanted input to put together, to, to put together a program that they've never actually had to do before. We've never been through a pandemic. We've been through several floods and fires and many other things, but this was new for us. And so, as, as it is for many, many, uh, counties, uh, in, within our nation. So, uh, we tried to be very constructive whenever I would, uh, spend time with these folks and say, "Look, be nice. Talk to these folks, but give them your input." Because a lot of folks were so frustrated during the first two to three months when they started, uh, losing a lot of their income. And it was, it was notable within the first two months, of course, for many of those businesses. So, uh, that would be one way I would approach that question.
The second part of the question is, as elected officials managing the county, how can you support the work of the public health officials who've been attacked, threatened, fired, forced to resign and undercut in many parts of our state and, and nationally?
Well, I went to lunch with Tom Gonzalez and I encouraged him and I said, "You know what? I'm an ambassador. I, I play nice in the sandbox. So I am a person that likes to work things out. I'm a problem solver, not a problem maker." So I told him I'd be willing to work with him if elected and do all I can to help him through this. And I was sorry to hear that he had had some nasty calls, uh, and not just him, but all of, all the folks that are dealing with this. And they, they were, he was gracious and said he was understanding of that because of where they're coming from. But, uh, I would like to be able to support him through this and work this out because we're not there. We haven't gotten there yet. We have a ways to go and I don't know how far that is. Nobody does.
Thank you. And the final part of that question, do you support the state mandates that have been given regarding the pandemic from the governor and from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment?
Yes.
Go ahead. Masks-
Oh, I'm sorry. And I did need to say too, that I do not, I do not advocate anyone being, not being nice to those folks that are serving us. I do not support that at all and I was very grieved by that. And yes, I have been wearing a mask. Uh, I do support that. I am also very aware of the fear factor that's, and concern that some people have. We have elderly. I had high-risk folks that are vets that worked for me and we gave them all the time they needed and space when, when this all hit. We had some young people out of our 12 to 14 full-time people. We let them be the judge and what, what was their comfort levels because our business was essential. So we wanted to make sure that they weren't, their health was not jeopardized. So we continue to follow that. I am a little concerned sometimes when I see people wearing a mask in a car by themselves and I'm not, I'm not being facetious about that. But I, that is whatever, wherever somebody's at, I respect them for doing what they do and how they feel they need to conduct themselves. But when you read down what the governor laid out, when we're six foot apart outside, we do not need to wear those masks. But if someone does, I'm respectful of their, of their stand on that.
Okay, thank you. So, um, next one up, um, what role can the county play in providing opportunities for housing for low-income and minority citizens?
Well, that's a great question because that's, um, a question I get asked a lot in, in the county. Um, how, housing affordability in Laramie County is kind of a crisis when housing prices and rent soars and now we have, um, rent, um, rent assistance for family, uh, people through COVID that haven't had a chance to work. Uh, we have a lot of contributing factors, including market forces, labor, land, material costs, productivity, lots of things that, um, impact, uh, housing affordability. And so together we can work on already existing programs like the Laramie County Home Ownership and Home Improvement Program, which is fee waivers, development, deferred development fees, rapid rehousing and other homeless prevention. We need to really conduct, um, another comprehensive view of the housing authority and work together regionally with individuals to consider innovative approaches to incentivize affordable housing development such as Regional Housing Investment Trust Fund, effective zoning policies, density, density, excuse me, density bonuses and transferable development rights. And I'll look at this in, uh, multi-family use development codes. Um, and so there's lots of ways that can, uh, the county can work as a convener and a leader, um, working with the housing authorities across the county and municipalities to stop this.
Uh, the second part of that question, we'll stick with you, Ms. Shaddick, Ms. Nellie. Uh, mobile homes provide an important source of affordable housing. Do you support the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Guidelines for Operation of Mobile Home Parks? And do you have any ideas regarding how to support existing mobile home parks as an important affordable housing option?
Um, well, I, I think this is a great question. We actually, um, attended a, uh, business meeting on this, on this subject exactly that the Fort Collins Business Association, the city was changing some zoning. And this is, um, an issue seen throughout the county, how we need to support the residents and maybe lean towards, um, the residents being able to own the land underneath their mobile homes and their manufactured homes. Actually, I think that there's a lot of folks who enjoy those communities and I know there's some in Laramie County that have done a lot of innovative approaches, bringing families together and, um, also those, maybe those homes with tiny home communities. We need to look at supporting those communities that want to build and expand as well. And I think we need to work with our municipalities, um, and with our housing authorities to make sure that those homeowners are protected and have sa- safety in their homes and their communities and make sure that the rent prices there don't soar, especially going through COVID. It would be great to lean towards those, um, folks being able to own the land underneath their homes.
Okay, now we'll move to Ms. Stevens. Uh, the question again, what role can the county play in providing opportunities for housing for low-income and minority citizens?
Yeah, great. Well, thank you. Uh, this is a big issue in our communities. You know, there are so many people that are overburdened by the cost of their rent in their homes. So we really need to find some solutions around not just affordable housing, but attainable housing for middle-class folks who are also struggling with getting into homeownership. Um, I thi- I think that working as a convener is one of the biggest ways that the county can help with this. So getting, uh, folks together who are from these nonprofits that build housing, um, getting the builders involved for those questions about attainable housing, uh, making sure that, you know, we're, we're, we're getting all those federal dollars and, and state dollars in that can help, um, you know, with, with the funding for affordable housing, which is always so tricky. Um, I think, I think that Jody's right, there are a lot of tools, you know, I, I don't want to list them all out, but, um, certainly, you know, density bonuses and land banking and there's other tools that we can use to, to get there, but we definitely need to do this. Uh, we just have too many folks who, who, um, are not leading their full lives because they're worried about the cost of housing in our community.
Good. The second part of that question has to do with mobile homes as an important source of affordable housing. Um, do you support the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Guidelines for the operation of mobile home parks? And do you have any ideas regarding how to support existing ho- mobile home parks as an important affordable housing option?
Yeah, this is an issue I've been working on, on city council already. So I've been visiting with a lot of, of mobile home residents and working with local nonprofits to see how we can bolster, uh, life in the mobile home parks. Um, there's some housing discrimination experiences that folks have had, so we need to stop that practice. Uh, but we also need to include mobile home parks as part of our affordable housing inventory. That hasn't always been done. Uh, we haven't always thought about them as affordable housing, but for many folks and often undocumented folks, these are, this is a great source of affordable housing. So, uh, you know, we, I think that zoning is one of the biggest ways that we can look at protecting, uh, these, this housing and making sure that we have mobile poke, mobile home park zones, uh, that will protect this housing and, and keep it affordable. I think also having a relationship with the owners of the mobile home parks, letting them know that, you know, we see value in mobile home parks, that we want them to continue and that in, we want them to be affordable housing in perpetuity and how can we build a relationship with them to, to make sure that happens?
Thank you. Mr. Austin, you're next with the questions on housing. What role can the county play in providing opportunities for housing for low-income and minority citizens?
It always seems that through the years, I've looked at this, my father-in-law built quite a few of these homes that he tried to get the cost down. It was somewhat of a cookie cutter, if you will, but it was the same house, 20 to 30 of them in a row and he could do it in a week's time because all the subcontractors could build the same house. They didn't have to even hardly breathe, swing the hammer. They had the same tools. They didn't have to, you know, stand there and look at it because there were no options in, in these houses. And the folks were encouraged to add gingerbread later. Now, this was designed for first-time buyers and retirees and it worked great. In fact, it was also for veterans. So I would say that it always seems that we need to go outside of the municipalities to get the cost down on the land and the development. Now, water's of course still a huge, uh, concern. It just went up, I heard in Fort Collins to about $67,000 now. Loveland's $65,000 for a tap. That makes up a big part of the development, no matter how you dice it or slice it. So we need to do zirkscape, we need to do small homes, small lots, and that's one way that I think the county can be a big part of that.
And then the second part of the question was about mobile homes. Uh, providing an important source of affordable housing. Do you support the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Guidelines for the operation of mobile home parks? Do you have any ideas regarding how to support existing mobile home parks as an important affordable housing option?
Is that all one question?
Yeah, I thought one question. It's just about, it's about mobile homes.
It's a good one. Hey, I, I grew up in three different mobile home parks, uh, as a child and, and by the time I turned 14, I got to see my first stick-built house. So I have no problem with mobile home parks. They're awesome. It was one way that my dad, who came over here from Switzerland as an immigrant back in, uh, 57, could do this. He could actually, uh, live in a home that was his own. And so there was that incentive, so I, I believe in that. Now, as far as the Colorado Act, I am not familiar with the guidelines that they have, to be honest with you, but I will look into that. I do support, uh, it would be great if they could buy their land that's under them because I noticed that through the years, the fees are so asked, so high, it's too out of balance. That needs to somehow be softened so that the cost of the home that they buy, and it might be a newer one, is not too high to make up the whole monthly payment. When you look at the lot rent, some of these parks are charging. It becomes too, uh, exorbitant for many of the families to be able to handle it.
Thank you. Mr. McCloskey, you're the last one on this question. Again, about, um, the role that the county can play in opportunities for housing for low-income and minority, uh, citizens.
Hey, thank you. Um, when I was on the city council, I was the liaison to the Community Development Block Grant. And, uh, over time, as people have mentioned, there's various tools you can use to apply to this issue. There never has been enough money to make headway on it. As I remember, we put money out for different projects and the list would never get shorter. So I think if you try and chase down government programs, uh, to pay for enough housing, you're never going to get there. I think there's different tools you can use, which have been mentioned, and that's a start. The other piece people are missing, I think, is jobs. I think when you talk about continually they'll have a problem making their rent or making their payments or their down payment on a house, if we can work on better jobs in Laramie County, they will have the resources to do that. So I guess that's a piece I would add in that usually you don't hear in that discussion. I agree, there's density, there's codes, there's different things you can work with and they're all pieces, I think, to the overall answer. I'd add jobs to that would make a difference.
Okay, good. And then the second part of the question was a question related to mobile home parks and, um, mobile homes being an important source of affordable housing, whether you have, uh, read or noticed the support or supported the Colorado Department of Local Affairs Guidelines for the operation of mobile home parks and whether you have any ideas regarding how to support existing home, mobile home parks.
Sure. Um, when my family first moved to Fort Collins, uh, we moved to a mobile home park up by City Park. That was our first place we lived in Fort Collins, so I've lived in one before. I think we have to look at a new model. Uh, when I've looked at the discussions around the area, the different cities talking about this, I think it's a piece that could fit in to the affordable housing piece that we really haven't been serious about before. Uh, I think we need to relook at it and say, if we want people that own the mobile home parks to, to add different amenities or treat people differently, we need to work with the owners and talk about that and say, how can we do this? Uh, a lot of times the city provides money and incentives if they want people in the city to do something differently. I think this is an area where incentives, uh, for the owners to add, you know, if they add parks or amenities where people want to live there at a lower cost. Price of land is not getting cheaper in Fort Collins. Building is not getting cheaper. I think this is a great alternative we should spend more time with.
Thank you. Uh, the next question, and again, oh, I'm going to hit you with a whole bunch of questions, but they're all about the environment. Stevens, we're going to start with you. And, um, let's see, there are four questions. The, I'm, I'm going to give them to you one at a time. How can the county commissioners work with other stakeholders to address degrading air quality levels, knowing that Laramie County is now a serious non-attainment area for ozone pollution?
Great. Well, uh, you know, I work on the North Front Range Metropolitan Planning Organization and we are tasked, tasked with working on air quality. So this is something that we're working on at that level. Uh, because we're in serious non-attainment, we will have to have a plan that's submitted to the federal government because we're not meeting EPA guidelines on this issue. So, uh, you know, there, there, we will have, uh, to create a plan of how we're going to make our air better. And I think that that's great because, uh, you know, we have a lot of people that are struggling, whether they have respiratory issues or asthma, um, or they're just, you know, just regular folks who want to exercise and enjoy the outdoors, uh, you know, that are struggling with our air quality. So I think that the plan will include, um, you know, reducing our vehicle miles traveled, uh, will probably be some regulations on oil and gas in Weld County. Um, so we'll have to see what that looks like, but we will be working on that and we need to work with our partners in Weld County as well on this issue because it's, it's not going to be fixed with just cars. It will, we'll have to deal with industrial, uh, concerns as well.
Um, the second part of that question is, how would you propose monitoring existing oil and gas wells to protect public health and the environment?
So I think we need to, you know, we need to be monitoring the off-gassing that happens, um, you know, the, and leaks from, from oil and gas operations, uh, that are in, frankly, that are close to our county because, I mean, with, when we're talking about air quality issues, they don't just stay in one place, right? I mean, we, we deal with some of the issues from Weld County and so, um, you know, I think that making sure that we, uh, are, are monitoring, uh, the pollution that, that's caused by, by oil and gas and making sure that we're, uh, you know, putting in regulations so that we, that, that not as much, um, of those emissions are expelled, you know? And I think so, we need to really look at tightening up regulations around this industry and making sure that it's not as close to, um, businesses and natural, our precious nat- natural resources and making sure that, you know, our people, uh, our people come first in our county and we need to make sure that they can breathe clean air and, um, we just haven't done enough about that yet.
Thank you. Um, the next one is, are there ways that Laramie County could become more sustainable? How can you help with this as a county commissioner?
Yeah, I, we absolutely need to become more sustainable. Look, climate change is, is staring us right in the face and, uh, you know, we have, we wake up to smoky skies every single morning. I mean, th- these are the results of climate change. We have drought conditions. We have, uh, you know, extreme weather events, fires. You know, if we don't face this, we're, we're going to all be in trouble. And so, you know, there are ways that we can work on energy efficiency, making sure that we're promoting electric vehicles amongst, uh, our fleet of county vehicles, working with the municipalities to develop their own climate action plans. Fort Collins has a great climate action plan. We can model off of that one. Uh, but we need to get to work fast on this issue. Uh, time is ticking. Uh, there's, there's a lot of urgency around that. That's why the city of Fort Collins declared a climate emergency. Um, this is not something to play around with. This is science. We are seeing the effects already. Um, but I think that, you know, some things like energy efficiency can also save businesses in the county money. Um, so we need to implement those kind of plans right away.
Uh, and then the last part of this question is, what environmental issue do you feel is of greatest importance of our county? And then how might you tackle it?
Gosh, uh, I think, I think there are a lot. You know, I think we need to pay more attention to this issue. I think sometimes the county has put, uh, industrial uses, extraction, um, different kinds of, you know, things are very unfriendly environmentally, close to houses, close to schools. So I think that this is a concern that I have. Um, even though we have land use code that says that's not a best practice, it still happens. So we need to protect our, uh, our water. We need to, uh, make sure that we're protecting our open spaces. We need to address climate change. Uh, there's a long list of things we need to do. We haven't paid enough attention to these issues at the county level. Uh, I think that that's why it's great to have fresh voices in, in the ca- Board of County Commissioners because, uh, we don't have a lot of time to deal with these issues. And, uh, we see a lot of, uh, ways that, there's a lot of encroachment into our natural areas and our natural resources that are, that are doing irreparable damage. And so I think that we need to stop that right away.
Thank you. Um, we're going to move now to Mr. Austin. And again, these are all about the environment. How can the county commissioners work with other stakeholders to address degrading air qualities, knowing that Laramie County is now a serious non-attainment area for ozone pollution?
Well, the Oil and Gas Task Force, which started, uh, last year, has been doing a great job. I thought they had a well-balanced group that they put together of about 20 folks. I sat in on that one, on the very beginning of that and I've tried to stay abreast of that with, uh, Matt Lafferty sending those reports out. Uh, I am concerned about that. I have been researching that, looking into it, talking to a lot of the folks on both sides of that spectrum because, uh, all the, all of the information and data is very compelling, so it needs to be looked at very closely. Um, I do appreciate the fact that when I'm waving on corners and waving at people right now in, in this, uh, campaign effort, uh, the carbon monoxide is killer. After one hour of that, you can feel it. You go home and you're like, wow, man, what just hit me? And so, uh, it's nice when the cars are not running. They stop, those ones, the newer ones that just stop and then you, you know, it starts up again when you put the foot on the gas. They had that in Europe when I was, uh, over there visiting 30 years ago. So we're behind the times in some of those areas.
Uh, second question is, how would you propose monitoring existing oil and gas wells to protect public health and environment?
I'll refer again to the Oil and Gas Task Force. I believe that they had, uh, suggested more monitoring, uh, more monitoring, uh, devices in the areas to keep better track of it. I have not truthfully looked at that lately to see what's happening. What is the latest, uh, and greatest data that is out there now? Because it is a moving target. It's constantly going. We're constantly researching it. And, uh, right now, of course, uh, this smoke is not helping us, obviously. It's, it's, uh, added to this and it's been very concerning. So, um, I, I know the setbacks are further away from some of these. We don't have very many wells in Laramie County that I understand. Last time I knew, we had about 17, uh, but that's been a while. That's old, that's old data, so I'm not really even sure how many we have now.
Are there ways that Laramie County could be more sustainable? And how could you help us as a county commissioner with that?
I've been a member and, uh, active supporter of Sustainability Living Association in Fort Collins for many years, Kelly Fall, Bo and Tony, and we've done a great job just trying to keep an eye on what's happening out there. We all collaborate. We get together and talk very often with those meetings about what we're doing. And because I am a, a building material recycling pioneer, after 25 years of it, uh, I started it when it wasn't popular. I started that when nobody had an idea of what, that we could use these building materials. So, uh, I'm very much concerned about that. So I'm very much concerned about that. I keep a pulse on it and looking forward to seeing that when we set up the new shit, that we will have the infrastructure set up in a way that we can handle more of, of what we're doing. We're not recycling enough yet, but they're doing a great job. Commissioner Johnson's been a liaison to that. Leah Johnson, there are folks that have a passion like I do for that. And I've been pressing in to learn more about it with them. So we can, we can go forward positively.
And then finally, is there an environmental issue you feel is the greatest, of greater importance in our county? And how would you like to tackle it?
Interesting. Lately, in the last several weeks, talking to many of the groups that are concerned about our trails, the motocross, the mountain bike folks, I myself have mules and horses. We have equestrian. We do a lot of riding. And I'll go to a trail. And if it's crowded like Bobcat a few years ago, we decided not to go back because we didn't want to crowd the folks that were walking, hiking, and using their bikes there. We said, let's go to Hermit Park. Let's go to Crozier. Let's go to somewhere else where it's strictly horses. And so these folks, these groups, there's large groups. One has 1,000 people. Another has 600. They put a lot of hours in to volunteer on trail building. They're concerned about needing more trails. And I think because of the pandemic, it's forced people to go out more. And now they're crowded more than ever. So like Commissioner Johnson said the other day, he said that we're just loving some of these areas to death. So I agree, we need more trails. That's kind of not, probably surprising to you, but that's something that I became, has become an issue because of this pandemic.
Thank you very much. Now we'll go to Mr. McCloskey with those environmental questions. So the first one, how can county commissioners work with other stakeholders to address degrading air quality levels, knowing that Laramo County is now a serious non-attainment area for ozone pollution?
Well, I think first you have to recognize the, the non-attainment is because the federal government has lowered the standard. It used to be 75 parts per million. They lowered to 70. So from, from that standpoint, you have to understand that they lowered the standard is why we moved into that category. When you look at the number of sensors around the area, and our area goes from Weld County down through Denver, most of the sensors that were not an attainment are not in Northern Colorado. Having said that, I think they're developing a plan now where you look at things like stationary sources, and you'll have to have more requirements on them, more regulations on them, to get the numbers down. If you look at the records over time, the ozone in the area has been going down over time. So we've been getting better with it, but we haven't gone as quickly as the EPA has lowered the standard. There is work to be done, and they're working on it. I think one of the things they're talking about is working with large employers. In the current time, we're seeing more trends of people staying home because of the coronavirus. I think that might open up some avenues for people to look more positively on not driving as much, working from home. So there's probably some positive things that are coming out of this. It would probably help us with that.
Thank you. And the next question is, it has to do with monitoring existing oil and gas wells. Do you have any proposals there, suggestions to protect the public health environment?
Having sat in on the Oil and Gas Task Force meetings, there was always the question about what is the state going to do versus Laramo County? The State Air Quality Commission has been working on new regulations in that area. And I think what they're focusing on is instead of looking at the emissions you have after you're up and running, is moving back in the process before you start drilling during the drilling process and putting more controls over that period of time. What I heard from a lot of the people in, in the Oil and Gas Task Force was, if you want to do continuous monitoring, the technology isn't quite there yet, but it's getting better. So I think with the technology, we'll be able to do a better job of looking at the lines and the tanks and doing a better job of monitoring them. So I think a lot of that is happening. The technology will give us some help there.
Are there ways that Laramo County can be more sustainable? In any way that you can help as a county commissioner?
Sure. Most recently, I've worked in a, in a document company where we would recycle over a million pounds of paper a year. And getting to understand what the recycling business is like, you need to understand that once you put it in the container, that's not the end of the process. When China shuts down taking paper or other products, it affects our country. So I think we need to look more at the end use on the recycling and make sure that market is there. So if we do things, I remember years ago, when we were in a time when the market wasn't good, the trash haulers were picking up recycling and taking it to the landfill. So you have to understand that whole process and say, how can we make sure when we increase recycling, which we can do, I think, we've done a good job with that, but we can do better on it, that there's end users there and we're more, it's more important that the whole process works. So there's a value on recycling the products.
Good. And the last part of that question is, what environmental issue do you feel is of greatest importance in our county? And how would you like to tackle it?
I guess I'd expand on something that was mentioned earlier. I too have heard a lot from people that use the trails. As we expand our purchases, just have a recent purchase of a new area for the natural areas, which I've supported in the past. We have more and more area that we're going to have to maintain. And there's a balance there. When I, people come to me and say, we need to have more trails in this area. You go to the staff and they talk about a balance and not overusing some of the areas that are very popular. So as we get, as we purchase new areas and the ones we have, looking very carefully at that balance. So how can we maintain that? Short story, when I was on council, we bought the Swanda property, south of Fort Collins. A lot of people know that as a Coyote Ridge now. And we had the question to council about how do we want to use it? One proposal was to put no trails, nothing on it. You could stand at the top and look out and enjoy the view. The other view, which I supported, was limited trails. So you still have the natural environment. You're not beating it up. You're not overusing it. But if the city was buying it and taxpayers are paying for it, they should be able to use it some. So I think there's a blend there. We have to look at again, how can we get people to use more of the open space we have instead of concentrating in less areas? But with the amount of space we have, it's a very important environmental issue we should look at.
Thank you. And now we're going to go to Ms. Shattuck McNally. How can the county commissioners work with other stakeholders to address degrading air quality levels, knowing that Laramo County is now a serious non-attainment area for ozone pollution?
Thank you for that question. Yes, we need to work regionally with our partners and agencies and other counties to address this non-attainment issue, which we've been in for a while. I've attended some of those meetings with the Air Quality Council that came up to Loveland, actually, this past, actually, last year it was. And I've heard some of the reports from the MPO organization. And I know we have some plans in place, but we need to, to get that addressed quickly, especially with the degraded air quality we've had recently with the fires. We know that we're all impacted because we do need air and water to live and, and to breathe. So we need to address that quickly. With the non-attainment, we need to also do, I think, an educational component with our public so they understand how important it is for their air to have this ozone treated and taken care of, and that, how they can do their part to decrease those levels with less driving. But also, we need to look at industry and their contributions to that non-attainment.
Oh, thank you. How would you propose monitoring existing oil and gas wells?
Well, I've been keeping up on that latest research. I attended the CSU Energy Transition Symposiums in 2016, 17, 18. I think last year they moved it. So we, there is some air monitoring stations that I, I think can do, can do continuous air monitoring. I'd like to place several of those throughout Laramo County in populated and non-populated areas and record those, those air quality levels and put them on a website. It's available 24/7 so folks can have a, an avenue and resource to understand the air quality and especially on certain parts of the county that are near industrial uses. I think that all municipalities would like to have everybody have a little skin in the game and help fund that. But industry should have a big portion of that since some of their industrial practices are continuing to that. Also, I think there's some infrared technology that we can use to monitor some of the leaks and, leaks going from the industry and make sure that we're monitoring those and, and hold those people accountable for those leaks and air, air violations.
Are there ways that Laramo County could be more sustainable? How could you help with this as the county commissioner?
I think there's many ways that we can be more sustainable in Laramo County. I think the staff and Commissioner John Kofalos have started a climate change action plan. And I think there's some sustainability items in that plan. I think staff have worked hard on that. And I really like to get that implemented as soon as possible. There's ways of moving us towards renewable energy, wind and solar. Look at incentives for local battery storage to help with that, that 100% renewable shift. We can look at, as a county, moving to vehicles, especially light duty vehicles that can be electric. We need to look at our recycling programs, our waste diversion programs, and look at composting. We also need to address regenerative agriculture and preserving our agricultural lands to help us with cabin carp, carp, capture. And also, we need to look at protecting our, our oil and gas and protecting our rivers, our rivers like the Poudre River. We need to protect the flow and flows of our Poudre River and keep that water sustainable coming through our cities.
Thank you. And your final question is, is there a particular environmental issue you think is most important?
Well, that's hard to pick. There's so many things that are challenging us right now. But I think, as Kristen had said earlier, right in front of our faces is the wildfire and our drought conditions. So I would say clean air and water are something we need to address right away. We have the only wild and scenic river designated in Colorado as the Poudre River. And we need to do what we can to protect those flows and keep that river healthy for the riparian area that supports 80% of the wildlife in, in Laramo County. Those riparian areas around the Big Thompson and the Poudre Rivers, that we need to support those going forward. We need to protect our watersheds from the Cameron Peak wildfire. Our watershed coming into the Poudre is threatened, and will have more of a flood risk and water quality degradation. So we need to look at those, and we need to address those going forward. And, and air quality as well, with the ozone and industry uses and the, the suit and contamination for the fires. We need to address that as going forward. So there's fire mitigation, being proactive in, in preparing for wildfires is going to be really important.
Thank you. Now we're going to a new category of land use and open space. And I know that all of you are interested in open space because we've heard quite a bit about it tonight already. We'll start with Mr. Osti. The Laramo County land use code is evidently being rewritten. Why is land use planning important for our county?
That has so much to do with where we're going from here. And they're giving, the county's giving the folks, the citizens, an opportunity to speak into that. I have attended some of those meetings, and it's great to see them being there. They're doing some charrettes and, and gatherings that they're allowing people to do that, you know, within, within reason. Of course, there was a lot more of it before COVID-19 hit than we have now. But I think that's fantastic to be a part of that. And again, to involve the people. Because what it all amounts to is what are the people saying? What do the people want? And so I want to do the best thing, best I can to, to honor them, be their, be their ears, eyes, and, and their voice.
Well, related to that, how should the county incorporate water usage into land use decisions?
As sparingly as possible. When I was raised by a very strict Swiss father, when he, when, when your time was up with a shower, you could hear some banging on the wall nearby. And that was the timer. So over there, their tubs were not even close to our bathtubs. When I had to, when I stayed with my gros, gros mutti, my grandmother there in Zurich, she had a tiny, teeny tub. I mean, it was so foreign to us. I took my wife there for our anniversary. And for us to be there and go through what we did there, even drove it home even more of how frugal we, how much more frugal we can be with our water. Now we're looking at it. We're having water restrictions in Fort Collins coming up October 1st, I'm understanding. So that is something that the zirkscape cut back on how many plants and trees. Look at what you're putting in for grass, you know, the native grasses that are more drought resistant. That has to be all, really, a lot more, more attention needs to be given to that.
And the final part of this question is, Laramo County has, has been able to acquire and maintain open space for all to enjoy. Should the county continue to add open space and/or make any changes in how open space is used and managed?
We have quite a bit on hand at the moment. I don't see us acquiring anymore for a while because of what we're going through with the pandemic. But I am a conservationist. I love, I am an Eagle Scout. So I learned how to take care of trails as, at an early age. I learned how to leave the land cleaner and nicer than when you found it. So it's very important to me. We need to appreciate it more than we have been. I think we're doing a great job thus far. But as we said earlier, because of the increased use and folks wanting to get out of their homes and get out of town and go somewhere safe where they can feel that they have the distance, go out there to the mountains, get the fresh air, well, before the smoke hit us. I mean, it was fresh air before this. But when this is all over and it gets cleaned up, it's going to be great to be able to appreciate that again. So I can see there'll still be a habit of the, from the majority of the citizens to keep going up there because it's already developed over the last five or six months now.
Good. Thank you. Now we're going to Mr. McCloskey with the same questions related to land use. The Laramo County land use is being rewritten. And why is land use planning important for the county? And if you'd like to incorporate also, and you get two minutes, whether you'd like to incorporate the question related to water usage?
Okay, thank you. Yes, I think the county has completed the, the new comprehensive plan. I was involved with Fort Collins when we did city plan years ago. And I know the important thing about it is to get the input from residents of the county. And that's easy to say these days because there's so much outreach going on. Some of it's more effective than others. I think since they went through the process and got a lot of good input, it's important because the county continues to grow. One of the areas we need to look at is the urban growth areas of the cities. Are we working together with the cities to make sure our goals are the same? Are we doing the same planning? Are we working together? Or are we working in our own, own silo, so to speak? So I think it's important to plan as we grow. I think it's important to work with the cities to make sure as they annex things into the city, that our standards are understanding what they want in the urban growth areas. I think on the water usage, I think incentives for zirkscaping and using less water makes sense. When you look at any water plan in the state, it always talks about conservation. That's one of the two pieces the Colorado Water Plan has that should be adopted across the state. I think one of the things we need to do is talk to the providers in the county. We have a recent issue up north of Fort Collins where you have an area that has been annexed by the city, and the water users haven't got together to talk about how can they provide the water to areas that are in the urban growth area efficiently and at a good price. So I think there's some work that can be done with the water districts in the county, getting together, talking about that. So in the future, if there's a plan that comes in, they already know who's going to provide the service for them.
Good. And then the, the related question, and again, I know you're all interested in this. Laramo County has been able to acquire and maintain open space for all to enjoy. Should the county continue to add open space and/or make any changes in how open space is used and managed?
Yes. I think they should continue to open, to gain open space. What they're doing now is on the, on the most recent acquisition of, of the ranch up next to the Red Mountain area, is I think they're looking for acquisitions next to what we have already to combine them for bigger areas. I think as time goes on, as we talked before about trails and the need for more trails in some different areas, is the outreach when they're master planning a new area. As they purchased a new area now and they go to the public and say, how should we use this? What elements should we have? That's where the different groups need to be involved, come in and talk about their area of interest, whether it's hiking, whether it's biking, whatever their area of interest is, that needs to be incorporated in the front end when they're developing the new natural area. So those uses will be there once they open it up.
Good. And then we're going to move on to Ms. Shattuck McNally and ask you questions about land use. So the land use code for the county is being rewritten. Why is that important? Is it important to you? And should the county incorporate water usage into land use decisions? And those are two questions. So you can take two minutes on it.
Great, thank you. Yeah, this is a big interest of, of mine. And, you know, July 2019, the county adopted a new comprehensive plan. I attended those meetings for over two years at the county, those input meetings, and attended with many stakeholders, including what I call the young, new bright generation of farmers. And now out of that, that comprehensive plan is now new county use codes that need to be adopted. And there's great ways for the individuals in the county to give input on those codes. I think that we need to look at where we want to be as, as a county in 100 years and see what we want to do, how we minimize urban sprawl, and how we utilize our land use codes so that we can be sustainable. Because we don't have enough water going forward to sustain the growth going forward. So I think that we need to be very thoughtful with those land use codes and having input on that from all of people, stakeholders. The land water use, I just graduated from the CSU Water Leaders Class. And we, for over a year, we looked in depth to those water uses and threats to our water supply and the drought conditions, and also looking where our water comes from and understanding all the complexities of water rights and water uses in different water districts. I tried to buy, I should have bought my water share for my property 14 years ago. It was $27,000 a share. I tried to look into it a couple of months ago. It's now $350,000 a share. So there's something that we all need to look into and understand how the complexities of water law and water rights are going to be addressing. So we need to look at water conservation, water use, water storage, and zirkscaping, all those, all those tools in the toolbox for us to address this. And people need to understand that to be sustainable, we have enough water with projects going forward.
And then the final question has to do with open space. Laramo County's been able to acquire and, and maintain open space for everyone. Should the county continue to add open space or make any changes in how open space is used and managed?
So we're very fortunate here with the vote of, the approval of the voters of over 80% for the Laramo County sales tax. We have a dedicated set of funds to purchase open space. And I think that is a testament to the will of the voters who want to see us purchase and continue to value our natural resources and preserve open spaces. And I support that. I hike over 100 miles a year in Rocky Mountain National Park. I could talk about that for hours. I love it up there. I've hiked so many different trails throughout Laramo County. And my family, mountain bikes, hikes, runs, trail runs, climbs, does all kinds of things. We need to get the voices of all stakeholders and the users of these trails. I think we need to expand it. COVID has shown us what growth is going to bring to our trail system. We haven't opened new trails in so many years. We need to increase connectivity and get the input from the multi-users because we have those conflicts now happening on the trails. So I do think we need to have input from all the stakeholders and work with the land use owners and help preserve that area because I'm a big passionate outdoor user.
Okay. Now we're going to move to Ms. Stevens. And moving right along here, land use. The Laramo County land use code is being rewritten. We talked about that. How should the county incorporate water usage into the land use decisions?
Great. Well, you know, I, I think that obviously land use planning is important. And it's really important for us to get this right because as, as we, as municipalities encroach on areas that were typically county areas, there, there can be a lot of conflict in those, in those situations. We do need to bring more people into this process, though. And I'm afraid that we haven't always done a really good job. And, and I think the county can do better on, on getting more input from all our residents. I think that sometimes we've heard more from developers and, and, and I think that sometimes we've heard more from developers and donors than we have heard from average citizens, and so we need to make sure we are doing complete outreach when we do this kind of planning. But I definitely think we also need to just be very wary of, you know, these industrial uses near houses, and I think that we, you know, that's something that we need to do. We need to protect people's health, and we can't keep putting industrial facilities near houses and schools. And then, do you want me to just continue on with the water? Okay. So, you know, we have it on, you know, water isn't unlimited, and so, you know, we have to think about, you know, we have to use our water resources very carefully. So I think that sometimes we think, and a lot of people in the public think this, if you turn on the faucet and the tap, water comes out of the tap, we're doing okay. And so I think we have a lot of education to do with regards to water and what kind of water shortages and drought conditions we're facing with climate change and less snowpack. I mean, that's going to impact our rivers, the health of our rivers, and our ability to use the rivers for water, for our water supply. And so, you know, while I do agree with, you know, robust conservation programs and zero escaping and the idea that we maybe have to, at some point, just give up our lawns, I think there's a more complete discussion that has to take place around, you know, around these dwindling supplies of water and what that means for land use in our county.
Would you like to comment about open space and whether we should be making any changes about adding?
Oh, we should absolutely add open space. Open space is beloved by many people in our community. That's why eighty percent of people voted for it. We do have the dedicated sales tax. I think getting more folks out to the open spaces is really important to me, and so, you know, I've gone out to Red Mountain, and it's gorgeous there, but I know a lot of people can't make that trek. And so my hope is that we can get folks that are of a low and moderate income out to be able to use some of these beautiful spaces, so that they're not just playgrounds for folks who can afford it, because everyone pays a tax, everybody should get to enjoy those spaces. So, you know, yes, to, you know, trying to balance trail use and conservation, but more to let's make it so everyone can enjoy these spaces, and that would be my ardent wish. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, believe it or not, I have more questions that I can't ask you. I wish I could, but we're going to move now to your closing remarks because of the time. So we'll start with Mr. McCloskey if you're ready.
Sure, thank you.
You bet. One minute.
Let me thank the League again for putting this on tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to the citizens of Laramie County and be here tonight. Laramie County is a unique place. The reason most of us came here, for our families, or for a job, or maybe school, my family came here for a job, and so I'd like to talk about a few things we haven't talked about tonight. When I started running for the county, a lot of people would say, what does the county commissioner do? And we talked about the wide variety of issues the county is involved with. Jobs, we talked about a little bit. I think being able to retrain our workforce, especially coming out of the coronavirus time, is very important. Veteran Services, that's a group we haven't heard much about. We need to do more with the veterans. It's a group we've left behind that needs our help. We need to expand those. One of the things I've been working on for a while now is improving the access to affordable childcare in Laramie County. The last report I saw said, at that point, there were seven thousand kids that didn't have access to it. We need to work on that. It won't be an easy project, but with the city and the county starting and nonprofits looking at it, we should be able to move forward. I think we've done a lot of analysis. What I'd say is, let's get something done. Let's do a pilot project or something. Let's move forward.
Thank you. Go ahead. Let you do your last thing.
I guess I didn't see any sign. I was looking for that.
Yeah, she added up, yeah.
We need to fix our transportation system. Laramie County has been a partner in I-25, trying to finish that. We have more to do, but there's some transportation issues we need to work on, and it won't be easy as the funding goes down, but we need to do it.
Thank you.
Bob McCloskey.
Ms. Shattuck McNally, please.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity tonight and all the volunteers who organized this forum. In the words of Congressman John Lewis, sorry, Congressman John Lewis, "When you pray, move your feet." If you look at my decades of service and leadership in Northern Colorado, you will see that I've been doing just that. Whether it's hiking over a hundred miles in Rocky Mountain National Park or serving on boards and commissions, I've been doing the work. I know what it takes to make our economy stronger and fairer, how to make our communities safer. I know we need to make college more affordable, quality healthcare universal, retirement more secure. I know we need to strengthen, not abandon, the promise of public education. We need to address affordable housing and childcare, and our climate crisis needs to be addressed now. We need to protect our clean air, water, and soil, and I know what it takes to lead our county going forward. Commissioner Kofalas has endorsed me and says he needs a strong partner to work with him on the county board of commissioners. I am that strong partner. I ask for you to vote for me. I'd like to earn your vote, so I can be that strong leader to serve and fight for you. I am Jody Shattuck McNally, running to serve as your next Laramie County Commissioner for District Three. Visit me at jodiperlerimer.com. Thank you.
Ms. Stevens?
Thank you. Thank you to the League for hosting tonight and for all your efforts on voter education. Look, we've outlined a bunch of issues that we have in our county. This is not an easy time, and I have the experience of leading through this pandemic and leading through difficult times, and I can continue to do so for our county. I want to help people recover from COVID. I think that that's our number one emergency, helping businesses and individuals recover from COVID. We need to protect our environment. Now's the time to do that. We can't ignore climate change. We also need to bring more equity and transparency into county government. There are so many folks that feel left out of the process, left that their voices haven't been heard. People are talking in the streets about how we need this racial equality, and so we need to pay attention to all these voices. This is not a time for business as usual. I feel if you, you know, elect my opponent, it would be business as usual, and I think we need more innovative ideas to move forward as a county. So I'm hoping you'll support me. I will speak out for all residents, and for more information, visit my website, kristinforlerimer.com. Thank you all. Thank you. Mr. Osti?
Yes. I am compelled to give back to the county that's been so good to me and my family with all the generations we have here, and the roots go deep. My heart is here. I have the experience to add to this job, thirty-eight years of it. I have been through tough, challenging times in this county, six to be exact, starting with the nineteen seventy-six flood. I volunteered through that. We had the building bubble. We had the two thousand eleven. We had the Hyde Park fires. We had all these things, and through those times, my business never suffered. We came through it stronger. I did not have to lay folks off. I know how to balance a multimillion dollar business and budget. I have the experience as an assistant purchasing agent in several companies. I have had the experience that has built me for such a time as this. I am ready to represent this fine county and the citizens of this county. It is my time to do this. We are empty nesters. I have plenty of time and energy, and I'm excited to get in there and begin to serve. I've been training for several years, so when we get in there, I will hit the ground running. Thank you, Ben Osti, for Laramie County Commissioner, District Three. Go to voteforosti.com for more information. Thank you.
Thank you very much to all of you. A huge thank you to all the candidates and to the city of Fort Collins. A special thank you to the talented Kelly Schroeder and Anne McPhee from the city of Fort Collins who kept us going and handled the technology. The League of Women Voters really encourages everyone who's eligible to register to vote, everyone who's registered to vote, to vote. We have a website called voteforoneone.org that provides useful information on candidates and on issues, and we encourage you to use that. Again, I really appreciate you all being here. Big thank you to the candidates.
Thank you, League. Thank you to the League.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night.